I was going to come in here and start singing "New York, New York", but I thought that joke wouldn't go over at this point.
Why don't you do it? We need another great.
Start spreading the news. So my sisters and brothers in the Musicians Guild probably wouldn't appreciate that right now.
You actually have a very nice voice.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed. Can you sing this? Can you do it?
My name is Anthony Mark. I'm the President of the Hamilton District Labour Council. We represent 50,000 unionized workers across Hamilton and area. I do have some friends standing up here in solidarity with me, some sisters and brothers. Mark Gallagher, who's the Business Manager for the Hamilton Brandford Building Trades, Mary Long, who is the Labour Community Liaison for the United Way and the HDLC, also a member of OPSU, J O D Eddington from SCIU Local 1, and also on the Labour Council Executive, Steve Fox from the Electrical Workers, Jeff Roman from UA Local 67, and Tom Adderton, the Secretary for HDLC, a member of Unifor. And I also want to recognise the sisters and brothers I think we have in here making a presentation later, from Leuna as well. It's good to have them here as well in solidarity. So I thank you for being here as well. I also understand that in addition to MDP McMeakin being here, that I don't know if it's been announced yet, but we also have Minister of Transportation Stephen Del Duca in the house as well. So I'm hoping that both Mr McMeakin and Mr Del Duca will be listening, because a lot of my concerns deal with not only step one of this process, and step one, as far as I'm concerned, is saying yes, but a lot of my concerns deal with step two and step three of this process. So even though I would encourage you, and it's a simple thing to come here and say, please vote yes, but beyond that, Labour Council has taken a stand that is rather conditional on that yes vote. And the stand that Labour Council has taken is, one, if we say yes, and hoping we say yes, that we can move on to step two, which is, let us please as much as possible, try and work with Metrolinks. And that also means working with the province and helping the province to help to influence Metrolinks as well, to say, one, let us try and build as much of the materials as we can and buy Canadian as much as possible, and help employ more Canadian workers. Second, that when we are building the LRT, should we get there, that as much as possible, we respect some of the agreements that locally we have with the building trades, our fair wage policy that we have with the building trades, and in as much as possible, if Metrolinks says, well, we can't use a local procurement policy, we can at least try and match their procurement policy as close as possible to ours, so that our local building tradespeople get proper pay and are respected the same way that they are here locally. So that's the second thing that we need to ensure, and that's a huge portion of it. The third thing is that when it is built, when we are ready to start running those trains, that we operate and maintain those as locally, as publicly as possible under the city of Hamilton, respecting our sisters and brothers in the ATU, the Transit Union 107. They work day in and day out, and they've been operating the HSR for close to 110 years now. They deserve that respect. They've been doing a fantastic job, and we would like to keep those jobs as local as possible. One of the things that I came really here to focus on today is the idea of jobs. And conservative estimates put the possibility somewhere between 3,000 to 4,000 jobs for this build and for potentially future operations and maintenance. And I'd like some of the councillors here to think, if one person came to your ward, if one company came to your ward and said, we want to bring 300 jobs to your ward, how much would you be in here fighting for that company to be able to come into your ward? Maybe that the city would invest time and energies, and maybe a tax break here or there, or maybe some legwork to help along. Those are some of the things that we really need to think about as we move forward, because I did some math the other day, and I'm an English teacher by trade, so math doesn't necessarily come easy for me. But it wasn't that difficult math. I took a look at the 2011 census, which is the last official census we have, and I broke it down by ward, and I broke 3,000 jobs down by ward, because even though the LRT may only run along part of the city, the jobs could come from anywhere in Hamilton and hopefully stay within Hamilton. But I'd like people to reflect on some of the numbers here. That if LRT is not approved, and we conservatively estimate 3,000 jobs, by ratio, by percentage, for Ward 1, that's 168 lost jobs; Ward 2, 219 lost jobs; Ward 3, 225; Ward 4, 201; Ward 5, 225; Ward 6, 231; Ward 7, 345; Ward 8, 288; Ward 9, 156; Ward 10, 138; Ward 11, 207; Ward 12, 201; Ward 13, 144; Ward 14, 99; and Ward 15, 144 jobs lost. The opportunity is immense here. And when we talk about poverty in this city, and we talk about bringing people up, and we talked about living wage, and I know that we weren't as successful in that as we hoped, 3,000 good-paying jobs in this city is an investment into this city. And LRT may not be the perfect solution, but it is a solution, and the 3,000 jobs that it offers are only an ancillary benefit to that. So as you are considering this going forward, I know many of you have said yes in the past, please consider keeping on with that yes vote. We need LRT. We need those jobs in this city. We are a city in transition, a city that's growing, and a city that's building for the future. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anthony. On the list is councillor Far, councillor Whitehead, and councillor Green.
Thank you.
Councillor Far, councillor Whitehead, and councillor Green.
Thanks, Anthony, and thank you, everybody, for coming. And I just kind of, it struck me earlier, one of our first delegates was Keenan Lemus from the Chamber of Commerce, and he had mentioned in his delegation through you, Chair, that it's unprecedented what we're seeing with respect to support. It's coming from all facets, from developers, from the business community, from our HALE representatives to FASCO, our institutions and our leaders there, our senior management over 10 years, our council's support over that time, and of course, unions. Have you, as union spokespeople, ever seen such an unprecedented amalgamation, all in favour of one project in this city in the past, through you, Chair?
I certainly, I don't think we have ever seen a project with this much direct dollar value in terms of an investment in this city. And I think that's what really has galvanised a lot of groups on one side. And to hear after 10 years, the growing potential threat to that investment, I think that's why you've seen a lot of groups, not just come together, I think in the past we've had groups that have been together silently, but this is a big difference in coming together vocally and making presentations like this and coming out together. And that's why I think you're seeing a big difference. That investment is something that's not only valuable to the city at large, but is valuable to the business community. You're right, we don't often see eye to eye with the Chamber of Commerce on things. There's things we disagree on. We've worked with them in the past, and we will work with them in the future. But this is one of those things where I think they realise and we realise, that money invested in this city for LRT is something that benefits all of us.
Right. And with the word benefits, through you, Chair, my final question. So we had a presentation from Jamie from Metrolinks at our last meeting, that was a lengthy one, that some stood, sat for some time, and talked about community benefits and agreements. And has there been any conversation since? Are you encouraged by what you hear from Metrolinks? And this is specific to your prevailing theme from the outset here, on how we want to encourage those 3,000 to 4,000 jobs, as many, to be local, our agreements to be local, our transit agreements and union agreements to be very much considered from the operating and maintenance side as much as possible. Are you encouraged with what you're hearing there thus far?
I've been encouraged by hearing that the community benefit agreements have worked with some municipalities. I think there are some scenarios whereby, like any kind of negotiation, nobody always gets what they want, but there have been positive aspects coming out of it with regards to keeping some of those efforts local, and that's what we'll be looking for. But like I said off the top, in order for that to happen, we need that first step yes. In order for us to even start talking about a community benefit agreement, we need to be able to say we're ready to move forward with it. And that for us is going to be ultimately probably the toughest step, trying to convince this council, trying to convince Metrolinks, that those jobs need to stay here, and that the cheapest alternative isn't necessarily the best value alternative for Hamilton.
I think your presence here in making that affirmation is a good step toward that, and certainly I'm very, very supportive and appreciate it. And I think you said Ward 2 was somewhere between 215 or 220?
219.
Well, I'm not interested in any job losses, only job gains in Ward 2, and of course, across the city. So that was good math for an English teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Whitehead, followed by councillor Green and Jackson.
I couldn't think of a better previous speaker, because, I mean, jobs are important, and the fact that 300 jobs left Ward 8 and came downtown, you can understand why I was very vocal about, that's not that benefit for the city, that's actually a loss in a particular geographic area that badly needs it. So it's great to see the Ward councillor supporting and understanding the importance of 290 jobs, because I feel equally with the 300 jobs we lost in Ward 8. So the question I have is, one, the fair wage policy. Being a big proponent of it, I'm sure the labour knows, I've been involved intricately in negotiations and problem solving on this file. Is it working? Have we got the bugs out, or is there still a way to go?
You mean if we got to that point where we would have to negotiate that with Metrolinks?
Right now, we have a fair wage policy in the city of Hamilton. Regardless, whoever, that's a, we're going to make the link here, so I just want to make sure that the system we have in place is working and the intended, in spirit of the fair wage policies achieving the results that we hope for.
Chair, with, Deputy Chair, with your permission, if I could defer that to one of my co-presenters up here. Mark?
Great question, Terry, and appreciate it very much. The fair wage policy in Hamilton, as I understand it, may not even apply to this Metrolinks. So that, to give you an answer, to be fair, until I find out that it actually is going to cover, I don't know if you're aware, but similar examples like the stadium didn't cover the fair wage agreement. So until I actually hear that, you know, there's standard going to be applied, if that standard's equal to the Hamilton fair wage or better, then that's great. If it's lesser, then yeah, that would be a concern.
So I appreciate the clarification, because I, for being on record, I've challenged Metrolinks, and I've made it very clear. Not only, I believe we have some of the highest skilled workers in this community, and real value for dollar. So this is not just about money, this is about the fact that you're getting good work for the dollars you spend. That it has to be. It's paramount, that whatever we can do to ensure that the contract incorporates local work and the application of our wage policy. So I want to make it clear that that's what you want to see, and that certainly, I'm sure there's a number of councillors on this horse you want to see. So I want to thank you for that clarification. The, I guess the other question I have is, you were here for the last meeting, and I was asking questions regarding, when I worked for the province of Ontario, they actually, for job applications, now it might have been a union negotiated thing, but everything is negotiated, they would require you have to be within 25 kilometres or whatever of the job. So which suggests to me that there was a principle of the province already was applying in respect to ensuring that there's local workers getting benefit from the job opportunities. Would you like to see that kind of thing incorporated into this agreement?
Yeah, certainly. We understand that with the different municipalities that Metrolinks has had deals with already or started deals with already, that there is flexibility with that. And I think a lot of that depends on the will of council to actually push Metrolinks on that. So certainly, some respect with regards to geographic distance would be huge. It's difficult to, it's always going to be difficult to ensure that every single worker is going to be someone from the city of Hamilton. But if you could put something in there, some restrictions, not only with regards to geography, but also with regards to, like I say, fair wage, the amount of people they're going to hire, the level of, the level of people that they're going to hire with regards to their expertise in terms of all of the different trades, that's an important step too. So we certainly see that as a negotiable item, and we hope that, like we say, once we get past step one, all of that would be on the table. And hopefully you would see us here again, supporting council, being able to go forward with Metrolinks on that.
I appreciate that. My last question. My last question. You know that the fundamental issue I have with this poorly laid out plan is it doesn't go to Eastgate. Would the labors and the builders endorse the fact that for jobs, Eastgate should be incorporated into the plan?
I will, I'm not going to speak for the builders. I will pass off to Mark and see if he wishes to do so.
Our position would be, and be respectful to all the affiliates we represent, shovel in the ground, project worthy, project ready, we would definitely support it. If it's a matter of build it or not, then I don't think that's the answer. But to start sometime, and similar to the rally on Saturday, we would like LRT, and we would like it now. So whatever that looks like, if it's to Eastgate, or if it's to Queenston, I think the real value is the fact that we're getting the ball moving, and we're building to that blast network and that larger plan.
Going to Queenston, sorry, to Eastgate would actually, I mean, one of the main themes here is that it's about jobs. I got to think that if you're going to Queen Street, sorry, Eastgate, and if that's the argument, that there would be more jobs.
I would, I would say, obviously, from Labour Council's perspective, the more jobs, the better. And a lot of that depends on, are they good jobs? And that will depend on some of the negotiations.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Green?
Thank you very much, Madam Acting Deputy Mayor. I always appreciate an opportunity to agree with the previous speaker. And certainly, the fair wage is something that we're looking very closely at, and you've already heard through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, my support for ATU operating this. But there may be some outside of this conversation who would look at your proposed thousands of jobs and snicker and say, it's an illusion, those jobs aren't really real. As the Hamilton District Labour Council, can you take a moment to speak to the types of jobs and the trades that will be on this site, so Hamiltonians have a very real understanding about what's at stake, and who's going to be impacted, should all of those listed jobs be rejected and sent back to some other city?
With regards to the build, you guys are making my job very easy here, because I get to pass this one off to Mark as well, so.
So under just the first layer, let's say, construction, you're looking at everything from support groups, basically in the actual job site trailers, you're looking at all the engineering, you're looking at all the layers that take place before the project even begins, which would be very, very significant for talking 3,000 jobs overall. You then take a look at the trade impact, you're going to look at Leuna, labors, you're going to look at carpenters, you're going to look at operating engineers, you're going to look at the electricians, you're going to look at, would be some plumbers, steamfitters, you're going to be looking at some ironworkers, you're going to be looking at heavy roads. So the hand association, you've got all of those local and regional contractors as well. So when you start looking at the gravity and the magnitude of what you see, there's just as much in the background you won't see. So it's huge.
And so, Mark, if you could, just for another moment, because I certainly appreciate having that understanding put forward, and the number, how did you guys get to that number? I mean, as a trades, like 3,000? Is it safe to say that out of those 3,000 people, there's a huge opportunity to have local workers working?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I believe that.
And through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, given the size and scope of this project, have you seen anything like this in the region, setting aside the stadium debacle, and I'll call it that? Have you seen anything of this size and scope, provided as an opportunity to your building trades?
I'd say it's a once-in-a-lifetime, you know, situation. Absolutely, it's huge.
And so it's your belief that in moving past this environmental assessment, which is an amendment to a past hurdle we've already passed here at council, probably unanimously, would you suggest that we start with this, and we're hearing some folks around the table talk about Eastgate? Do you, like, do you agree that the opportunity to build an infrastructure, government investments in infrastructure create jobs?
I agree.
And so on the procurement stage, and I think this may go back to Brother Marco, on the procurement side, we know that there are fears of privatisation of public transit, and I know Brother Tuck is here, he'll probably speak about this. Can you just talk about privatisation as it might be an impact? Because these are, Madam Deputy Mayor, very important questions, and I really appreciate this forum to be able to get this stuff out here, because for me, this is, this is the meat and potatoes of this project, is who's going to benefit and how.
Yeah, I mean, our biggest concern, I will be the first to admit, that when Metrolinks first started putting together exploratory meetings for the Lake Shore West Corridor, as Labour Council President a few years ago, I was invited to their first couple of meetings. And I must have stirred up a couple of things, because I haven't been invited since, because I kept on asking about procurement, 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 and they never provided me with a procurement policy. They said, well, we have procurement policies, but not a procurement policy. So they have ideas of where they like to go, but they don't actually have any master documents necessarily that they work from, because they work on each one with each municipality, from what I hear. What we need to think of, if we're thinking of this as an investment in Hamilton, then we need to think of the money flowing into the city as an investment in workers. And those are workers who are not now, you know, for years we heard about how the trickle-down economy didn't work. This is a trickle-up economy. We get money to the working class in Hamilton, to the workers, and let them spend it in Hamilton. And when they spend it in Hamilton, it works for the city. The opportunity here is huge with the amount of money. Imagine, think about the amount of money that was just proposed, I think, for the anti-poverty work that was being done a couple of weeks, so I think that was $50 million over 10 years, if I'm not mistaken? A billion dollars, probably, over a build that could last between five and 10 years. And if you don't think that that impacts poverty in this city, it does to a huge degree, because all of those jobs mean that jobs will open up for other people as well. And the trickle-down effect of jobs and the trickle-up effect of money going up into the community is absolutely huge. So that procurement becomes a very, very important piece. And not only will it happen with regards to, with regards to privatisation, one of the biggest concerns that we have is that there are some rumours out there that, for instance, Metrolinks will go out and try to buy Bombardier cars. We've got no problem with Bombardier cars, they're Canadian-made cars, that's fantastic. But Bombardier will try to provide them at cost in order to give a 20- to 25-year service agreement signed on, which is privatising service and maintenance, and not allowing Hamilton workers to deal with it, because they would have to cart in people from outside. So those are some of the things that we would have to look for if we pass step one, and we'd have to think to ourselves, how do we ensure that the best value for this city is maybe paying a little bit more for the cars, but making sure that the money stays in Hamilton with the workers here? Because that's when it's going to stay in Hamilton and recycle through over and over again.
My last question. I appreciate the opportunity to have you guys before us, given just your wide expansive knowledge in the labour sector. You talked about opening up jobs as a way to uplift people out of poverty. We've had conversations about CBAs here, collective, community benefits agreements. Mark, maybe you can speak to this, or Anthony, whomever would choose to field the question. What are the opportunities you see as it relates to potential apprenticeship programs, potential directed employment programs for our youth, or for kids that, or adults who might be on the margins as a way to enter into the trades?
I think this LRT project, and to give real weight to the crosstown Agnitan with Metrolinks, they did, from what I understand, a substantial job. They worked with the Central Ontario Building Trades, they worked with the Toronto United Way, they worked with probably 40 or 50 or even more community groups, and to get everybody in the same room to even agree is amazing. So very optimistic when I see the leverage of that, and if you happen to have an opportunity, go online and type in social procurement, and what you start to see is a whole different level of magnifying a project. And what I get at is, there used to be a fundamental way, you would take a look at a physical aspect of a building, what's its footprint, how many stories it's going to be, and then they would go out and tender it and try to get, you know, a low tender, or what they would sometimes also suggest as a fair value approach. But now what you're taking a look at is, you're now looking at that project, and it's not just the square footage, now you're looking at, how can you leverage that in the big, big, big community picture? So can some of the materials be purchased locally? Can some of the contractors and expertise, if we're talking about technical expertise, is the same for a contractor A and contractor B? But yet contractor B has 100 years of history in the local community, and has relationships with the school boards, has relationships with ministry, training, college, university, apprenticeship structures. If they've been employing and they have a platform to actually leverage and get people into construction in the community, and it can be leveraged, that it's not just a short-term position, but an actual career, well, now you've opened up a massive conversation. And that's where a lot of the discussions, if you take a look at Australia, you take a look at the UK, you look at portions of California, you look at even Toronto itself with the crosstown, they've gone to that magnitude. Now they're looking at, not just procurement in the physical aspect, but now they're looking at, how can we leverage this even further? So social procurement becomes the real magnifier in this. And if you can do it right, I've heard them securing up to 10% of marginalised certain groups within Toronto that wouldn't have an opportunity, the building trades have put out national positions that they believe the future workforce should look like the community they're working in, and I support that. I'm a first generation. My father immigrated here, and one of the reasons why I'm standing here today is because I had that opportunity. And I've said I've come from privilege, and I mean I do. But if we talk about opportunity, the magnitude of the opportunity depends on how serious we take this, and how serious the city managers can be when they actually take a look at some of the models around procurement. And if you look at social procurement, or you try to look at how you can really leverage this for the maximum for Hamilton, there's huge benefit there.
That's incredible. Wow. The fullness of that answer, talking about not just the environmental assessment, but the whole ecosystem that this project is going to bring to the city is incredible. Thank you so much for being here, and I know, if I could, just take a moment and thank councillor Jackson, who first raised the point about ATU and about operations and maintenance, and I know he'll have additional questions to follow up.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jackson?
Thanks, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, and thank you, councillor Green, for the segue. Anthony, thank you, you and Mark, for being the spokespersons. I'm familiar with Mary, I'm familiar with Tom. Please, again, the other two that are behind you as well, your representatives that are with you, just so we know who they are, please.
So J O D Eddington, she is, she is a member, she is living in Ward 6, by the way, and a member of SCIU, and also on our executive of our Labour Council. And Jeff Roman, who's a member of UA Local 67.
Right. Good seeing you again, Jeff. Thank you, Anthony. So Anthony, I just, let's have some blunt conversation here, if we could, and I'm typically a guy in life and in politics who tries to give the benefit of the doubt, and tries to be as optimistic as possible, and sometimes when you get burned two or three times, then some cynicism sadly sets in. So you talked about with this seat you're asking for, allowing the EA to go ahead, because there's potentially 3,000 jobs at stake, but I wrote down three qualifiers you have: ATU operating down the road, local hiring, obviously, unions and/or local hiring of our people, and fair wages. Am I correct in those three that I wrote down, or did I misinterpret anything, Madam Deputy Mayor?
I'll just clarify, so that the purchasing hopefully happens as Canadian as possible.
As Canadian.
As Canadian as possible. That the build happens as close as possible to the city's fair wage policy, even if it's not the city's fair wage policy, can we find something that's comparable? And thirdly, that as much as possible, the operations and maintenance could happen in-house in the city of Hamilton, presumably, possibly with the HSR, and if so, that the jobs be kept with ATU 107.
So Anthony, let's just follow one hypothetical scenario, and do your very darnedest to allay my fears, or diffuse, or counter what I'm going to suggest in one hypothetical scenario. So we approve the EA. A year from now, a number of these qualifiers come back through negotiations with Metrolinks, and they're just not on. Madam Deputy Mayor, through to Anthony, you still have the same opinion a year from now?
My opinion has to be the same, because in order to get to that point, we have to say yes. There's an opportunity for jobs there. And the opportunity for jobs, it means that we have to go past this first step. For me to recursively say, let's say no, because we might not get those things, doesn't even open up the possibility for some of those opportunities to happen. So as you said off the top, a lot of this is, a lot of this comes down to opportunity for the city. It's not a guarantee, definitely it's not a guarantee, and we would know that as well, because we've seen cases across the province where Metrolinks isn't necessarily giving everything that the municipality wants. But we would hope, in concert with council, and with Labour Council and other working-class people around the city, that if you can even move them on a continuum from completely privatised over to completely public and everything we wanted to, if you can move them two-thirds or three-quarters, that's a bit of a victory, considering they would probably want to go as much the other way as possible. So that's our push.
I appreciate that. And it wasn't a trick question. I was sincerely asking, a year from now, it definitely isn't what we were hoping for hypothetically. And then at that point, are you suggesting, if council wishes to, it could at that point, if the hardship financially to local taxpayers, O and M agreements are higher than what we anticipated, council could then say no at that time? However, I'm already being told the number of 50-plus times that I've supported this, and so a year from now, if I allow the EA to go ahead, and a year from now, a And so a year from now, if I allow the EA to go ahead, and a year from now, a number of your qualifiers that I liked very much, and thank you again, Councillor Green, for my motion last October 25th to have ATU at the forefront, ideally operating, if none of them materialize, I'm going to be stuck in a position a year from now that I might then have to say no, on behalf of what I feel would be the majority of my constituents, and then would be further open to another criticism of the 53rd vote that happened in 2017. I'm not asking you to protect me, I'm just asking you to help me with a scenario I've just described, Anthony, or Mark, please.
So, and the way that I would look at it is, we are coming up here with our endorsement of LRT, based on the best information that we have right now. And a year from now, might the best information that we have then say that this hasn't worked out in our favor as much as we thought? And might there be a possibility that we reverse a position? Sure. I mean, that's what inquiry is all about, and that's what learning is all about. So there's an entire possibility that things may change completely. If you ran into MetroLinks and in the end MetroLinks said, no, 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 no to everything, and that was a firm no, and there was no room to wiggle, there was no room to lobby, with that new information, might we change our stand on things? Sure, is there a possibility? Yes.
Okay, I appreciate the sincerity. And a couple of stings I still have on my back over 20 years. And you may say, Tom, it's not necessarily comparing apples to apples, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor. But for those of us that were on regional council in the 90s, 20 years ago, for building the link, Mark, and if you want to comment, Mark, Wimpy from Toronto, a contractor, a big one, had just come in maybe about 100 grand, if memory serves me right, low bid. But Dufferin, who was the next low bid, the majority of council decide after legal advice, we still decided to go with Dufferin because we knew they would hire more local, Leuna, a lot of your unions, et cetera. And we built the link, but guess what? Wimpy successfully sued the region of Hamilton Wentworth because we didn't go with low bid. Mark, any comment on that, please?
Yeah, I think, just like everything, time changes. And what I would see is, if you take a look at some of the forefront, things like globalization wasn't quite as prominent now with TPP and SEDA and TESA and different agreements coming. There's more people eyes wide open and a little more aware. I think, to try to answer the question fairly, is what came first? The local sustainable economy or globalization? And I think what it fundamentally comes down to is, is globalization that's something that affects the regional economy? Or does the regional economy affect globalization? And the reason why I kind of put in that perspective is because I believe the city councillors here are the conscience of the government and of the democracy. And I believe from their perspective, they should be looking at, and not from my position, but they should be looking at from their constituents' position, what's beneficial for a local sustainable economy. And I had the opportunity, and it was well done, I had the opportunity to attend the Bayfront Conference that was put on by the city. And it talked about regional hubs, and it talked about growing regional economies, and it talked about the synergies between Buffalo and the synergies between Hamilton and synergies between the GTAH, Toronto involved. So when you take a look at all those, what you have to do is you have to ask yourself, do we affect our regional economy or does globalization? And if we take the position that it's our jobs to be stewards of that local economy, then I believe the question, if you were asked in 1990 or you asked in 2019, would be a completely different answer. Because I think people understand globalization versus regional. And regional has to win out every time, or else there's going to be, you know, problems far more significant than what we're talking about as a yes or no vote on LRT today, right?
Is that fair?
That's fair, Mark. And it sounds like you could teach a class on this at another time. So I appreciate that. And I was one of the guys that supported Dufferin and got sued over it, but I did it for what I thought were the right reasons. But thank you for sharing.
For the record, I believe you were right. I mean, sincerely, like sincerely in the big picture.
Thank you, that's one check, Mark. Okay, thank you. Lastly, again, a little bit of my cynicism, recently you alluded to the stadium recently, and Mark or Anthony, if you want to comment. A number of local members, both live in my ward and members of a number of your trades and building councils, called me over IO, given the contract, Ontario Sports Solution. And I can't tell you the number of times I got called, "For warning, Councillor Jackson, it's not going to be the quality of work that should be built, it may not be fair wage being paid. You mark our words, you're going to be disappointed at the end of the day." So again, how do we avoid that? Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Mark, please.
I think, once again, it's back to social procurement. It's back to looking at, how do you leverage what's best for the local economy in the bigger picture? So when we take a look at the stadium, and not to go backwards, the stadium did a lot of good things. The stadium also had a process it was supposed to follow, and it didn't follow its own process. And to get more specific, I will just very slightly, because I know there's some sensitive issues here, but if we take a look, when you talk about prequalification, if you're committed to prequalification and you understand procurement, then how you prequalify those people that you bring in the room, basically gives you the end result of what that construction project's going to do. And what I mean by that is putting it into like a sports analogy. If you have all first-line stringers and you can pull them all in, then it's a win-win. If the procurement and the qualification doesn't follow the proper structure, and if at the last minute, they pull in a third-line benchman or somebody who wasn't originally, you know, an A player, well that's going to affect the outcome of that project. And what I can say is, through the prequalification process, I was involved at arms-length distance from it. But I got phone calls two different days, one on a Friday and one on a Monday. And that conversation I had with that contractor that was named low tender, he never got a reply the following Monday, and he was supposed to. So there was some things that happened there, I don't want to get into it here. But what I would say is, if you have a good procurement system, if you actually qualify and you look at apples to apples, and you look at, you know, what the technical aspects are of a project, and my example would be, are you building a garden fence? Or are you building a sophisticated modeled building system? So what I'm getting at is, if it's a garden fence you're building, then some of the technical aspects can be a lesser issue in that procurement system. But if you're going after a top-notch sophisticated building system like we have in today's world, you need to make sure that you're recognizing the appropriate contractors to do that work, and it's all within your prequalification system.
So Mark, what I've heard is to wrap up, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor, I appreciate your indulgence, I haven't asked too many questions today, thank you. So if I've interpreted correctly, Mark, what I've heard you say is, where unfortunately we may have not had sway with IO, an arms-length agency of the province, you folks are hoping we may have sway with MetroLinks to do exactly what you said with procurement? Because those agencies are governing the process. In fact, MetroLinks, I don't even know if half the people know this in the city, MetroLinks, if this ever gets built, will own this line. The city of Hamilton, even though it's our road, we will not own this line. So I finish with that, Mark.
As I can speak to, what I understand, even from the Liberal Government, when they put together this whole LRT initiative and looking at all the great reasons why to do it, they also brought forward a social procurement component. They don't necessarily, you know, run down and join hands and embrace it all the way. But what they have said is they want community benefits, they want employment targets, they want things to be done. So if we can get stakeholders, community groups, not-for-profit organizations, and city staff in the room, I know there's platforms here already developed through apprenticeship systems and programs that can really leverage and help these marginalized areas, regions, youth. There's people willing to do some heavy lifting that have already done the lifting. It's just a matter of getting everybody in the room and everybody being respectful. That we can't always maybe get everything we want, but we should be able to get to a compromise that is beneficial for the overall good and wellness of the city. And I think the provincial government supports that too, or else they wouldn't have connected MetroLinks and community benefits in this whole piece that we're talking about.
Mark, Anthony, thank you for taking my questions head-on and your thorough replies. Thank you, Acting Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor, oh no, sorry, Mayor Fred.
Thank you very much, and great presentation as usual. Thanks for being at the rally the other day, your presence and your support on LRT and investments in our community has been steadfast, and I really appreciate that. You know, I know that, you know, some of the questions are trying to flush out what the local content is going to be. And I'm firmly of the belief, and I've had this assurance from the Premier and the Minister of Transport, that their interest is not unlike your interest, which is making sure that the community benefits are fulsome. There's no rationale to just drop an LRT line down, built by someone else in, you know, from wherever, without any local labor and without any community benefits that add up to, you know, positive employment and, you know, painting that entire picture. So Mark, you and others, you've painted that picture spectacularly well, and that is exactly the point. And so do you have any doubt, in your mind, that the province of Ontario sees that the same way that I see it, and I think the same way that you see it, in terms of delivering the kind of fulsome community benefits, employment-wise, apprenticeship-wise? Obviously, the, you know, I understand that Leuna was the main contractor for ION in Kitchener Waterloo. They, their employees were the employees that actually built it. So local labor, local Leuna members are, you know, intended to be, whether it's Leuna or other, some other local union, part of your trades, are all intended to be the suppliers of the local labor and everything that has to do with LRT. Do you have any doubt on that? I know it's a concern that you need to raise. I mean, you have members and you want to make sure that your members understand that you're advocating on your behalf, as you should, and I will too. So I stand with you on that full stop. But in your mind, do you not believe that the province of Ontario has the same attitude towards what they want to see happen in Hamilton or any other place where they drop an LRT or an enhanced public transportation system?
I believe, to give you a real sincere, fair answer, I have some concerns. I've heard conversations in this chamber around fair wage. Last March 28th, when there was 40 delegates, one of the MetroLinks did speak, and he made a great presentation about community benefits. But I even took that some language and some things that he spoke about, about fair wage and how fair wage comes from the United States and California, and it can actually drive the costs of a construction project up. With some of that conversation in the room, that makes me a little worried. But to be fair and honest, I have to go in with eyes wide open until I actually see it, you know, in writing. Nothing's a guarantee or a promise, but I believe with the government provincially, the government here in municipal, and I believe with the goodwill in the room, I believe it's very doable, and I believe we will get there. But I don't, I don't have a guarantee.
No, I mean, there's no guarantee in life on anything, quite frankly. You know, I have no guarantee that I'll be here tomorrow. But I have a belief that the benefits that you're advocating for are inherently part of why we're all sitting here today, and why I've been advocating for this project in the first place. It wasn't just about transit line and moving more people, it was about the employment opportunities and the construction jobs, and the spillover effects into other jobs and poverty issues. I mean, if you're going to create benefit in a community, develop a, you know, a robust work plan that puts people to work. Best place, best way to kill poverty is give them a job. And so what we're doing here, in many respects, is providing jobs for many, many folks in our community that can lead to other jobs that provide broader community benefits. And I know you agree with that. So I won't even ask you to answer. So thank you, thank you for that support. I mean, I think the, you know, the laborers and the trades have always been supportive of this work plan, this great project. And much appreciated, and I'm with you and all of our union friends and Labor Councils that we need to make sure that every possible benefit comes to the city of Hamilton. You know, short of making the vehicles here, because we don't have the capacity, but it needs to be made in Canada, and at very best in Ontario. And, you know, the last round of vehicles that were delivered to Kitchener Waterloo were actually Ontario-made in Kingston. So, you know, I think we're, I think we're all working for the same objective. And I'll just let you know that I'll be working very, very hard to ensure that that happens throughout this process. So thank you very much.
I'd happily say I believe that 100%, Fred, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy, Madam Deputy Mayor, my apologies. Folks, good presentation. And, you know, I'm so pleased to see you here because you really do raise one of the most important facts and issues of this entire project, and indeed any project that is of a major build coming to our city. So my question to you is, knowing that MetroLinks is going out with a call, with a call for a consortium or applications to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain this entire system, this entire project, how do we, because we have no say in this, ensure that what you're asking here today gets included? Because I have a real concern about that, a real concern about that.
It's definitely one of our major concerns as well. Part of the issue is, it's very, as I've mentioned a couple of times, it's very difficult for us to move to that step two without having step one in place. And without having that step, you know, without saying that we're going forward yet, is MetroLinks maybe jumping the gun, putting this stuff together abitally? Probably they are. The way that we exert, the way that we exert influence and pressure is the same that we're doing here today. We show up, we put feet on the ground, and we show up here and we speak to groups like this, and we show up at MPP offices and speak to them as well. Because to think that MetroLinks, even though it's an arms-length corporation, is totally devoid of government influence and legislative influence, I think would be a bit of a misnomer. So we are prepared, if council, if council is with us, and as we have heard almost all around the table today, if council is supportive of some of these ideas that we have put forward, we are willing to do a lot of the heavy lifting and put feet on the ground and join up with you to get out to those provincial representatives, to get out to MetroLinks, and to make a show at some of those meetings and make a show at some of those, whatever they happen to be, proposal meetings or whatever it is, and put those ideas forward and say, this needs to be part of the Hamilton plan. This isn't a MetroLinks plan, this needs to be a Hamilton plan. And we're prepared to rally as many people as we can. You know, if it takes handing out flyers to 10,000 people on Labor Day, we will hand out flyers to 10,000 people on Labor Day and get them calling up people. Because that's the power that we have here is, you know, as much as I know, a lot of you have had conversations with MetroLinks in the past, and I'm sure that in many of those cases, you know, it's a lot of, here's what we have been doing, here's what we expect to do. That doesn't mean that it's a solution for us. And a solution that's for Hamilton has to be at least partially made in Hamilton, we have to have that input.
So Anthony, I mean, I appreciate your honest answer and that it is a concern. Of course, I understand it is a concern for you folks. It's a concern for us around this table as well. You know, the fact that whoever, whoever gets the project, the nod to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain, you know, they may not be from this country. It could be a consortium, it could be international, it could be, it could be non-union. I mean, it could very well be that. And so, you know, I think we're going to have to go way beyond handing out flyers. I think we're going to have to go way beyond that. And I think it's, you know, potentially going to be a fight going forward. We don't know that. We don't know a lot of things. And that's a big reason why there's so much angst around this project. We're not getting the answers that we're looking for. We're trying to protect you folks. You know, my relatives came here in the early 1800s, they've helped build this city. They were all in the union. My husband's still in the union. They're a huge part of our city. And so yes, as much as we're committed to stand up for you and to stand beside you and fight with you, when it's completely out of our hands, that worries me. Because to me, nothing that happens in this city should be out of our hands. And it is. So I appreciate your honest, I appreciate your very honest words. And, you know, again, we need to keep our eye on the ball with this one. But I just hope you understand that, that, you know, keep showing up, absolutely. I encourage you on all levels to do that. I encourage you on all levels to do that. And to get everyone involved, who's in all of your unions. Because the fact that HSR might not have anything to do with this project, that's a very real, real possibility, and a real concern. HSR may not have anything to do with a transit project for our city, for the city of Hamilton. And we need to keep a focus on that, you know? All the other rhetoric is nice, you know, shiny, shiny new toys, and all this kind of stuff. But this is the stuff that we really got to keep focused on. So thank you so much for coming out, and for continuing to be engaged in this project. It is, it is of the utmost importance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you both, and thank all of you for coming out, we appreciate your presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Malena-